All right, it's six o'clock, so I will call to order the West Richland City Council meeting for August sixteenth. And with that, I'll ask, before we call a roll, I'll ask Stephanie to read the hybrid meeting ground rules. Call roll, please.
All right, thank you. Tonight's meeting will be held in person with a virtual meeting component. If you are participating virtually, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on the three dots in the upper corner of your video view and clicking rename. Audience members present in the council chambers will be called upon first during public comment periods. Those participating remotely should virtually raise your hand if you wish to speak. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, roll call. Brent Gary.
Here.
Richard Bloom.
Here.
Fred Brink.
Here.
David Fettow.
Here.
May Hanes.
Here.
Kate Moran.
Present.
John Smart.
Here.
And Stoker.
Here.
Thank you. And with that, I will ask Mayor Prokem Brink to lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And just a little FYI for our audience tonight, we got, we got new buttons on our microphones. So if we are trying to coordinate lips with fingers to push to talk, well, you'll all understand. With that, council, the agenda is before you this evening. However, Councilmember Smart has requested item six C, uh, copy release and six J ordinance fifteen twenty-two amending the office, uh, see office hours uh, be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion. Uh, those items can be added down below under eight G and eight H respectively. So with that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Motion in a second. So with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, please.
Aye.
You, motion carried. Presentations this evening, we have, uh, Captain Grego is going to introduce one of our new officers. So, uh, Captain Gregor, excuse me, Chief Grego, you know, after all those years of captain, you know, yeah, I, he didn't buy me lunch last week, so he's back now to captain status. Chief, my apologies, sir.
Um, I think before I introduce one of our new officers, I explained that this is an honor and privilege to get to, uh, introduce them to people. Tonight, we have, um, Harrison Gerard, Gerard, sorry. Um, Harrison Gerard was born April of two thousand. He was born and raised in Kennewick. He attended Kamaiak in high school. During his junior year, he enrolled in Running Start program to attend Columbia Basin College. He graduated from Kamaiak in high school in two thousand eighteen. He continued his education at Columbia Basin College. He received his associate's degree in criminal justice and business. He currently has transferred to Central Washington online to continue his education. He's married to his best friend Salem. She's here tonight. Uh, he recently lateraled from Kenwick Police Department and is excited to do this job and the opportunity for West Richland. Um, he wants to say thank you to us and the city for his opportunities. So I'll give him that opportunity. But I would also ask that he introduce his family that he has here tonight. So without further ado.
Uh, so here I got my mother, Melissa, um, my wife Salem, and my mother-in-law Paula. And then behind them, I got, uh, Paula's parents. I got John and Sharon. Find them.
Before I put you on the spot and ask you to talk to us a little bit, if there's family members that would like to come up and, and take a picture with, uh, the chief and your son at the podium, please come on around and get us straight on some. We're casual here. I mean, those behind pictures, you know, they just don't like get, yeah. Well, you told that story years ago in his little boy.
Yes.
Okay, there you go. All right, perfect. Thank you. And welcome aboard. You've been around for a while. I've, I've said hi to you a number of times and it's, it's great to see you again this evening. We certainly appreciate your service and your dedication to our city. So with that, why don't you tell us, uh, council a little bit about yourself?
Um, so kind of add on what, uh, chief said. I was born in, or, uh, born in Kennewick and I was raised there for about twenty years. Um, went to all Kennewick schools, went to Desert Hills. Uh, and then, uh, elementary school was Sunset View and then went to Kamaiak in halfway through my time at Kamaiak and I joined Running Start. Went to CVC. Um, while I was there, I, uh, I did criminal justice class taught by, uh, a Kennewick officer that retired. Um, kind of fell in love with criminal justice and decided to do an associate's degree in it. While I was there, I learned about the cadet program at Kennewick Police Department. So kind of made the decision that this is something I wanted to do. And I kind of followed through with that. Um, and then I got hired on with Kennewick as a cadet. And I was there for about six months doing admin stuff, doing just regular stuff, just doing stuff around the department, kind of learning what it is to do or what it is to be a cop, kind of learning how the ways things go and how the department runs. Um, I was doing that for about six months and then I got hired on with them and I went to the academy with them. And then when I was there and I was doing my field training, uh, I just didn't feel right. I didn't feel like home, kind of. That's how I kind of explain it. So then kind of thinking about it, I decided to come over. I ended up leaving and I decided to come talk with, uh, Chief Grego. Um, I kind of learned about the city and a wonderful place it is. And that's when I made the decision that West Richland was probably the best place for me. That's the place I wanted to be. Um, that's kind of, kind of basically my, my little story.
But that's awesome. We, uh, we're, we're very adamant about family first and, and, uh, and a family here in the city of West Richland, not only in our police department, uh, but our, our staff in general. So you have chosen the right family. We're grateful for your, for your choice in regards to that. So with that, if you'd come up front and we'll, uh, have council members introduce themselves to you, that'd be great. Thank you. All right. Yeah, I, I was teasing the other day. I said, I said, well, you know, when it's, when it's time for him to step up to go to Metro, he, this is our perfect guy who went from Metro. But and, uh, somebody said something about maybe we'll put him in the high school first and we'll get him cleaned up there. Looking, looking forward to many years of your service, Mars buddy.
Thank you.
Great kid. And like our other men here, got a flying department, flying department. Very proud of all of them. Okay, with that, uh, we're going to go ahead and move on to the, uh, second quarter financial report. And our finance director, uh, Aaron Glenn is going to present that. So, uh, Aaron.
All right.
Good girl from there tonight. Okay.
I'll do it from here.
Perfect.
So thank you, uh, Mayor Gary. Good evening, council. So this evening I'm presenting the two thousand twenty-two second quarter financial report. Uh, we'll start with an overview and an economic update, followed by specific information regarding the general fund and other funds. Uh, for the first overview of the, uh, economy slide, we'll start with a positive news. Um, that is with the unemployment, which has decreased to three point six percent employment levels, which are now back to pre-COVID numbers. So that is the positive. Also somewhat positive news is the price of crude oil and gasoline has decreased in the last month. Um, although it is up for the year, the national average is still four sixty-five, but trending in the correct direction. Uh, one of the most concerning areas, uh, with the economy right now is inflation. We've talked about this for the past year. It's continuing to grow. Uh, one of the measures used is the Consumer Price Index or CPI, which nationally was increased uh, by nine percent year over year, uh, for ending June of twenty-two. Uh, the Seattle metro is even higher at ten point one. And here's a little graph for you, uh, showing kind of a steep curve there at, uh, beginning of this year. Uh, locally, we look at the city's building activity. Uh, single-family permits, uh, issued were seventy-two in the second quarter for the second quarter compared to a hundred and sixty-eight for the previous year. Uh, however, uh, the positive news here is the multifamilies. We issued eleven where we did not issue any of last year. Um, those eleven make up ninety-two units. So that is a positive direction for that. Uh, this is comparable to what's going on in other areas of Washington as well. In the, uh, economic and review update published by Washington State's Economic and Revenue Forecast Council on August twelfth, so just a couple of days ago, um, stated that Washington housing construction slowed in the second quarter, but remained strong and particularly with the multifamily segment. So we're trending, uh, also in the same direction. When we look at data compared to the two thousand twenty-one budgeted numbers, uh, at the end of June, two thousand twenty-two, the city was at October twenty-two projected numbers for the number of single-family residents. So still doing quite well compared to where we projected ourselves to be at the beginning of this budget cycle. This is another view here, uh, of new single-family home permits. This shows the years in comparison with, uh, the green line showing an increase in the valuation. Uh, I think this is a good example that demonstrates the volatility. So you can see the jaggedness of that green line. So. Um, yeah, another view of building permit fees collected compared to what was budgeted. Um, we did increase the budget last November. Um, we're not quite on target, but very close. Um, again, it's a up and down swing, so we're still right in range. Um, but this will be something we monitor in the coming months. Now looking at specific information regarding the general fund, uh, this slide shows where the money comes from in terms of budget. And you can see the majority, uh, is from taxes, so sales tax, property tax and utility taxes. And as Mr. Smart pointed out, the last one, uh, sales taxes actually getting to be a bigger number for us. Positive news. Um, uh, here's a view of the general fund revenues collected. Uh, the city collected twenty-eight percent more in revenue in twenty-two compared to twenty-one. Uh, the largest contributing factor is the transfer in of ARPA funds in the amount of one point three million to cover the cost of general fund salaries. So that was, um, the salaries for, I think, April through June. So like the, the second quarter there. Uh, both building permit revenue and charges for services, which, which are primarily plan review fees saw big decreases, which were twenty-seven percent and twenty-one percent respectively. Uh, this is another view of the general fund revenues. This is comparing budget to what was collected for year two thousand twenty-one. The general fund collected seventy percent of budgeted revenues. Normally we're looking for it to have collected at least seventy-five percent at this point. Uh, however, the budget amendment we did in April to transfer in ARPA funds for the general fund salaries is skewing this number bit. Um, so I think, uh, we'll, we'll be right on target without, uh, that number. Uh, these next three sides are looking at sales tax revenue and general fund. Uh, sales track, sales tax increased two percent compared to the prior year for the first two quarters. However, if you look at this graph on quarter two, uh, you'll see that the actual quarter two, uh, was decreased as, as on a downward trend. Yeah. So in this next slide, we show, um, where it is coming from in the business sector. The positive news is that it is not in the retail sector. The retail sector is still seven percent above where we were. Uh, manufacturing and wholesale uh, are the two largest negative percentages, although they're the smallest percentage that they make up. Um, construction, even though it's down, uh, it's kind of in line with our permit fees. Um, and that's where we're seeing the big decrease. So next slide, uh, this third slide references sale tax, the sales tax shows sales tax collected compared to what is budgeted. Um, we're again a little bit above, uh, our projected, uh, point. And so we're right on target. We're maybe a month of leeway there. So another major revenue source in the general fund is from utility taxes. Overall utility tax revenue increased six percent compared to two thousand twenty-one. There was increases to electric water, sewer storm water and solid waste as well. Uh, this increase can be contributed to increased rates as well as the large amount of new development. Here's another look at utility tax. Something that we have talked about before is a continuous downward trend of utility tax. Um, however, uh, you can see that it's remaining flat. Um, last month it was up, so still not expecting this trend to continue. Uh, another major general revenue source is the property tax, which increased seven percent compared to uh, the first half of last year. The majority of property tax is collected in the second and fourth quarters. Uh, so here's, uh, the expenditure side of things. So where does your money go? The majority of expenses in the general fund are for public safety at forty-four percent. I believe you will have remembered previously this was, uh, usually around the fifty-one to fifty-five percent. But again, due to, um, a big project where we have, are transferring out the three point three million, I think three point one million to the wealth three project from general fund. This has skewed this number. So you'll see that the non-departmental is the twenty-three percent and that has increased significantly, but it is for a one-time project. Here's another slide that looks at department on where your money is going. Total general fund expenditures were fifty-five percent of the annual budget. We're looking for seventy-five percent or less in this area. Again, the wealth three project is skewing this number a bit, but, uh, without that, we are still on target. The city has special revenue funds for streets, park impact, criminal justice and library. This graph displays the major revenue sources for each fund. Each of these funds has seen major revenue source increase compared with the exception of Park Impact Fund, which saw a decrease. This decrease can be contributed to the Heights at Red Mountain development and those homes are not paying for park impact fees, but rather building that large seven acre park. Um, whereas most other new development activity is contributing to the park impact. This, uh, picture of special revenue expenditures, for the most part, these remain fairly flat. The street funds saw an increase mostly due to equipment purchases and the criminal justice, uh, fund saw a slight decrease. Uh, next we'll look at our capital project funds. This is, uh, second quarter for our new fund three twenty-one, which is a cooperative way project. Um, for revenues, uh, for the project funds, there's a lot of activity for, uh, not a lot of activity for the police or the, um, cooperative way. One is just ending and one project is just beginning. Um, also you'll notice extremely large budget for fund three oh one, uh, the REIT. Uh, this is for, uh, again, another budget amendment we, that we recently did for the state route two twenty-four Red Mountain interchange project. So that big green line is the budget. We haven't really started spending on it too much. Uh, we anticipate this project carrying forward for several years. So revenues for funds three oh one and three oh two are from real estate excise tax. We saw a four percent increase in collection compared to the second quarter last year. I expect the city will receive more than the budget amount by the end of third quarter. Um, revenues for fund three fifty-five are from the traffic impact fees. The city saw five percent decrease in collection compared to second quarter last year. The largest difference is the city collected large impact fee with the construction of the police department. However, the city did collect some larger fees, um, in May and June of this year, um, primarily to do with the multifamily, um, permits that were issued. Uh, expenditures for the capital projects funds were minimal for the second quarter with the exception of fund three fifty-five, which had several projects going on, including the bombing range road, the intersection, the South thirty-eighth signal project, South, uh, state route two twenty-four Red Mountain interchange, Paradise Way for phase four and the King Road widening. So lots going on in that fund. These last few slides, take a closer look at our utility funds, uh, for revenue, water collections decreased two percent. The decrease is most likely due to the extremely wet spring we had, which resulted in less water consumption. Uh, we are at nearly fifty-six hundred, uh, utility counts filled, water utility counts at the end of June. Uh, sewer collections increased to eight percent. Primary, this is due to the rate increase that was effective December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one in the construction of new residences in the last year. Uh, here's an image of the irrigation revenue. Irrigation increased five percent for the second quarter. Um, here's, uh, this is the stormwater collection, which was nine percent for the second quarter. And the last utility revenue solid waste collections was up eight percent. Uh, this final slide is a view of the utility fund expenditures. For the most part, they remain flat. The one exception is fund four four one, which we have a lot of the same, uh, capital projects going on, but this is the water component. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Aaron. The presentation. Counsel, any questions, Aaron? See, Councilmember Moran, card.
I just have one question. Will we be receiving the slideshow and the email or can we receive that in email?
Yes, we'll send it out here, uh, later this evening or, uh, tomorrow morning.
Not that what's in the packet isn't pretty, but this is also pretty.
Anyone else? Very good. Thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to our consent agenda this evening, which consists of payment of the bills, approve the minutes from the regular meeting on July nineteenth and the special meetings on July twenty-sixth and August third, as well as August ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Motion to approve traffic safety signage. Motion to approve power DMS subscription for the police department. Resolution thirty-nine twenty-two setting public hearing date to consider a petition for a furnished improvement waiver Hampton Street and Ironton Drive. Resolution forty twenty-two related to surplus properties in the police department. Motion to approve an administrative settlement for the Maxim Road Right Away acquisition. Ordinance fourteen twenty-two vacating ten-foot access control and screening easement. Lot number one of short flat, excuse me, eighteen twenty. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to comment on the consent agenda this evening? See no one in our audience personally, but we do have some virtuous. If you'd like to address this consent agenda, please raise your virtual hand and star nine. Stephanie, do you see one?
I do not.
Counsel may have motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Stephanie. You see a hand up? Was that prior to or after the fact?
Uh, it was after the, the vote.
Thank you. With that, we will go ahead and move on to citizens' public comment. This is our first opportunity for citizen public comment related to items that are not on the agenda. If you would wish to provide comments, please come to the podium, state your name and address the record. Obviously, we have no one in-house this evening, which is unfortunate. However, if there's anyone participating virtually that would like to provide comment, your item's not on the agenda, please raise your virtual hand or star nine by phone. Stephanie will recognize you and will allow you to make comment. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
All right, it looks like we have, uh, resident names.
Okay, go ahead and unmute resident miss. You have a last name, please state it and your place of residence for the record, please.
Can you hear me? Is audio working?
Yes, we do hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I've had technical difficulties here in the apartment getting a secure line. First of all, thank you so much for being here. Thank you so much for serving. Um, you said I got three minutes, so I'll make it brief. You asked me for my last name. I'll make that even briefer. My last name's long. L O N G. Long. Uh, the title you see there is miss and I like you to use that because that way I can remain anonymity. I'm part of the address confidential, confidential program. It's a federal program that protects people that have sadly been abused intimately. So if they had any kind of physical abuse threat to their life, they jam us in that program. The reason I'm bringing that up is I don't want to disclose my address. The police have been here so many times, I can't even walk my dog to cross Dallas Road or go around the roundabout. My son is being hit by cars on the bike path from our business riding back to the farm. He now has a titanium pin in his leg, a fractured, uh, left arm. The kid is sixteen. He was doing what his dad asked him to do. And the child, he, he was riding the ten speed that he put together. It's a seventies model. He wasn't trying to be cool. He was trying to get back to the farm to get done what his dad asked him. So to make it even briefer, I'm tired of getting targeted. I can't even ride my bicycle to Yokes to get a loaf of bread. The roundabout just jams over us if we're trying to walk our bike, walk our dog or ride our bicycles. What can I do as a resident? I know the how to pay taxes for my business. I know how to pay taxes on, on, on residential and commercial property. I know how to collect sales tax. I know how to read your statements. What I don't know is how to ride my bike on bombing range road safely to Yokes when I don't want to use my truck because I care about the environment. What I don't know is how can I help as a resident make things safer in these apartment complexes? What I don't know is how do I help the children here that want to ride their bikes too? Okay, so I'm out. You've got my last name and you can look that up and work that out. Any questions for me as resident miss?
And, and I was just asking for your place of residence, not your address. So I assume you are a West Richland resident for the record.
Yes, sir. And I have the ability to buy more private property. And the reason I come to your meeting is not out of malice or anger. It's out of a want to help the situation be better. It's out of a public school teacher that wants it better for the children that come to me and say, I'm on my bike on a bike path, you know, and I want to ride with my parents. How do I get around the roundabout? They almost drive over you and your dog. Why are you standing out there like that? It's because I'm with those children, even if I am retired. They recognize you as a public servant and they say, teacher, I want to ride my bike on the bike path too. Why did your son end up in ER with the pin in his leg? When he comes to visit, he tells us about it. This is basic stuff in the apartments on the corner of Dallas and on the corner of Kennedy. And yeah, that's that president. Okay, that's the name of that road, Kennedy and Dallas. Please don't look into it any further. The police have already been here so many times and they make me move at my cost in the federal program. So it costs me three to four thousand to move every time I get targeted. I beg you for confidentiality. I beg you as a participant in the ACP program or every judge asks for anonymity so they can make rulings and decisions and laws that help our community. I beg you to stop targeting our people and our children.
Thank you for your comments. Much appreciated. Thank you for your comments. Much appreciated. Anyone else? Stephanie, do you see anyone else?
I do not see anyone else, no.
Thank you. With that, we will go ahead and move on to ordinances, resolutions, motions and public hearings. Eight A and eight B are closed record hearing and a motion to approve plat oh twenty twenty twenty-one, the Red Mountain multi-use preliminary plat. Since this is a closed record here, I'll ask the city attorney Bronson Brown to read through the hearing guidelines. And then we will hear from our associate planner, Alicia. Handsome for the staff report. Bronson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a closed record hearing and the purpose of this closed record hearing is for the city council to consider the pertinent facts, applicable law, and to make a final decision on the Red Mountain multi-use preliminary plat. The appearance of fairness doctrine applies to this this hearing. The document, this doctrine requires that this hearing must be fair, informed substance and appearance. The hearing must not only be fair, it must also appear to be fair. Therefore, at this time, I'd like to ask council a few questions. First, has any member of the council engaged in communication with opponents or proponents regarding this issue outside of the public hearing process?
No.
No.
Will any member of the council obtain any financial benefit or suffer a financial loss as a result of the outcome of this hearing?
No.
Is there any member of the council who believes that he or she cannot hear and consider this application in a fair and objective manner?
No.
Is there any member of the public, either proponent or opponent of this matter, who objects to the participation of any of the council members in hearing this matter?
No.
He he is public.
Those are all the questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And uh Alicia, staff report, please come join us.
Good evening. Um the preliminary plat is like the mayor said, Red Mountain multi-use. The applicant, just as an overview, is Frank Teague's LLC with PBS Environment Engineering and Environmental as the engineering firm connected to the project. Um the property is fifty-nine point four four acres. Um there'll be, it will be final plotted in three phases. Um there are twenty-one lots and those are um split into three different zoning types. Um there will be twelve multifamily lots, uh one commercial lot and eight industrial lots. Um the property in question is located to the west of the Paradise Way and Keen Road intersection. Um and Paradise Way will continue as part of this project. The comp plan designation for this single parcel, there are three different comp plan designations. There's a portion that is designated high intensity. Excuse me, high density residential. Um a portion that is industrial and a portion that is high intensity commercial. Um and that, yeah, in terms of zoning, that's um multifamily residential, light industrial and commercial general. The properties will be split up into lot, the property will be split up into lots to make use of those different zoning designations. Um the applicant, we received the application from the um applicant with a geotechnical uh letter um as well as, which will be followed up with an additional report and a cultural resources survey. The the project was uh issued a mitigated determination of non-significance on June twenty-eighth. Um the applicant submitted a, as requested, submitted a cultural resources survey um per the comments that we received from the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation and the Yakima Nation. We anticipated that we would be receiving comments from that. Um due to the uh heights of Red Mountain Ranch being in the same vicinity, they also provided a cultural resources survey. Um the report uh well, the survey received concurrence from DHP on July fifteenth. Um we will be requiring an inadvertent discovery plan as part of the CIPA determination. And in the event that materials are found, uh work will stop on the project and they will be evaluated. Public notice was sent out on June twenty-first. Um we received no comments from the public on the project. And the planning commission meeting was held on July fourteenth. And the planning commission uh they held the public hearing and voted to recommend the council approve the preliminary plat as conditioned. Yes.
So with that, I'm going to ask, obviously, we don't have anybody in the in the audience this evening, but is there anybody of a part of the party of the record on online this evening if you would like to make comment? Go ahead and raise your hand. Yeah, I see nobody of party of the record. You had nobody at the public hearing. They commented.
Not on behalf of this project.
With that, um plat oh twenty twenty-one, Red Mountain multi-use preliminary plat, motion to approve, please. Mayor, I move to approve one very flat, Red Mountain multi-use.
Second?
At motion and a second. Uh any more questions? Uh yes, we do. Councilmember Bloom.
All right. Looking at the preliminary plat, um lot, the multi-residential zoning lot eighteen, which is a large expanses, that is is the intent there is this preliminary subdivision would happen later on?
We've not received any information that that's what the property, the developer intends to do. Um it may be a larger complex of three plexes is something that we've heard. But at this time, there's no plans to subdivide further and in this, in the multifamily portion.
Right. So so we are proving these relatively large, some large, some small preliminary uh plat and per the rules, just just for my edification, uh they subdivide three without coming before council again, or would that be a new bridge?
I'll reach out to Eric if you could.
There's a five-year, so it has to get to final plat. They have to get to final plat, do all of the preliminary work ahead of time, right? And then once after final plat's been approved, there's no allowance for them to subdivide again for five years.
So but they could subdivide in opposing the final plat, correct?
They can't add additional lots to the final plat. So what they have before you this evening is the total number of lots they have. They can reduce it, but they can't add more lots to it. Well, without going through the processing.
Or or revising the preliminary.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Peto?
Sorry, forgot to push the button. Um I just had a question on the condition of approval that it was uh removed, the Paradise Way showed the complete street infrastructure. I'm just curious what the what the reasoning that was for that.
So the applicant's uh the applicant's representative, Jason Maddox with PBS, he asked for uh three E to be, excuse me, one E to be removed because it's repeated again in the I believe it's in section three. It is the tech, the basic structure of one E, one E, excuse me, one C
One C, okay.
is repeated. It, the full details of that are included in the minutes from the planning commission meeting. I can't remember off the top of the uh off the top of my head what they were wanting to, what the replacement was for that, not the replacement, but the repetition was. But it was repeated. We are like, the bases are covered. They just wanted to take out the repetition of that.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Buster, have any questions? Answer, Councilmember Moran?
Thank you very much. Um I'm just wondering, uh I'm looking at the CIPA. I'm just looking over it again and I noticed that this section of the CIPA where it talks about what kind of vegetation will be removed or altered. It specifies that clearing will entail removal of non-native aggressive and orbs, but it doesn't say that natives would be removed. So I'm just curious first if that was their idea to only remove the non-natives or if they're just actually clearing out everything.
I can answer that.
That's okay if you don't know it right now.
They're clearing out everything. If you go out and look at the site now, it used to be farmland, so it's just kind of you know, weed grass and stuff like that that's grown up around in the area. So they're going to go ahead and as they develop, it'll remove all of the existing vegetation and replant with whatever their site plan would propose.
Okay, thank you very much. Um and also, I just, that got me thinking, do we have issues or have we seen issues similar that could pop up here that we have over in Collins where we have large number of houses and it just happens that in that area we have a lot of water that tends to stay there and get people's basements messed up?
As part of the CIPA, they do a geotech report that looks at the groundwater and figures out where the groundwater is. We can't necessarily determine if that's going to happen down the road uh with irrigation and and things, but as of today, it's fine.
Okay, thank, I I was looking for that and I didn't see anything that made it glaring. I just wanted to make sure that was on people's minds. And also, just as a comment, I'm hoping that they're planning for their common areas to focus more on low water use plant, especially in the multifamily areas. Just need to comment one. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else with their cards up, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Much appreciated. And then also eight C and D are closed record hearing and a motion to approve plat zero zero one dash twenty twenty-two for watermark preliminary plat. And since this is a closed record hearing, I'll ask Bronson to once again read through the hearing guidelines. And then we'll ask Alicia to present her staff report. Bronson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, this is uh has to do with the watermark preliminary plat. The appearance fairness doctrine applies to this hearing. And uh just like at the last hearing, this doctrine requires this hearing be fair, informed substance and appearance. The hearing must not only be fair, it must also appear to be fair. So therefore, I have a few questions for council first. Has any member of council engaged in communication with opponents or proponents regarding this issue outside of the public hearing process?
No.
No.
Will any member of the council obtain any financial benefit or suffer a financial loss as a result of the outcome of this hearing?
No.
Is there any member of council who believes that he or she cannot hear and consider this application in a fair and objective manner?
No.
Is there any member of the public, either proponent or opponent of this matter, who objects to the participation of any of the council members in hearing this matter? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
With that, are there any parties of record who would like to comment on this item this evening? See no one in the audience this evening. Are there any party of records, individuals, virtual this evening? Raise your hand if you are. I see no one. Stephanie, do you?
I do not see any parties of record, no.
All right. Thank you. And with that, motion or uh we'll ask Alicia to go ahead. Oh, should I do that one? We're moving on to the plat twenty or zero zero one twenty twenty-two watermark preliminary plat. Man, motion, please.
I move to approve preliminary plat number plat oh one twenty twenty-two watermark. Based upon the above listed findings and facts, it includes law, conditions and approval as recommended by the planning commission.
Motion and a second. Counsel, any more questions of Alicia? On this preliminary plat for watermark. Yeah, I see Councilman Bloom.
Um the um there there are many discussions in here for parks, parking properties and that nature. Um and in particular, in the CIPA, it actually starts calling out um numbers for parks and and as part of the parks committee, we'll be discussing possible changes in the future. And this may be to Eric's question, is the secret discussion pertinent or not? Or is it just goes at the time? I see the conditions to be tied to our municipal codes, which change. Is that accurate?
They will be required to mitigate their park impact fee when they start developing the site. Their project is uh is vested to today's standard. Um and if they move forward, they could potentially request to meet future standards, but they'd have to meet future standards for all of the development. Um and they already have a proposed plan to mitigate their park impact fees by developing uh some property that we own that's adjacent to this development, a five acre piece. Um so that's the intent at this time.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, please. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. And then items eight E and F are public hearing and a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-two comprehensive plan amendment docket. And with that, we yield the podium to see. Community Development Director Eric Mendenhall for his staff report this evening. Thank you, Eric. Alicia, thank you for your reports this evening.
I'd rather not push the button down and talk, just come on up here and you know, present.
I've already got an LMI claim working on my my finger.
I can understand. Um so before you this evening is what we typically do every year, which is bring a docket for comprehensive plan amendments to you. Uh and this is not approving any of them. This is just approving the docket that would allow it to proceed forward to the planning commission. Allow them to have um discussion, allow them to hold a public hearing, allow the public input on these proposals and then be able to bring a recommendation to the city council for approval, denial or 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 some other decision. Uh what is before you this evening? So what we received um before the end of January was two applications. One was from uh the property owner Indian Eyes. It's a uh large construction equipment rental office uh organization that purchased the old Moose Lodge. They have some property that is adjacent to them that they'd like to use as part of their parking that is zoned residential and they want to change that to a commercial use. But in order to do that, uh they needed to go through this uh comprehensive plan amendment. Uh is commercial adjacent to it, so it wouldn't be considered a spot zone because it's just extending that zoning out a little bit. The other application that we received um was from Mitch Mitchell Career LLC. Um this is property that's down off of Van Geeson next to uh Paradise. Uh this is to rezone some property that's currently zoned commercial. It's on a hillside. It would be very difficult to develop for commercial uh to to rezone or to re-designate that for uh multifamily residential designation. So his intent is to build some nice units there on the hillside that would have the view down on the commercial and out across the the heights of Red Mountain. Uh that's a four and a half acre, little over four and a half acre piece. Uh that is consistent with the adjacent zoning as well. Uh we've got some multifamily just to the north of of Paradise. And so again, this isn't for you to prove saying, yes, we want this rezoned. This is just to set the docket to allow these two applications that we've received to move forward. Um staffs recommending that council approve these as they meet the requirements set for setting uh to be on the docket.
Thank you, Eric. With that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing up at six forty-nine. If you would like to make comments to the setting of the two thousand twenty-two comprehensive plan amendment docket. See no one in our audience, but if you would like to speak to this item on the agenda, please raise your virtual hand. You'll be recognized. And unmuted by clerk. Let's see one resident miss. And unmuted by clerk. Let's see one resident miss.
Hello, can you hear me?
If you'd like to make a comment to the setting of the two thousand twenty-two comprehensive plan, please go ahead and do so. If there's something other than that that you'd like to speak to, this is not the appropriate time.
Thank you for your clarity. When would be the appropriate time to address a previous issue regarding the waterways out to Red Mountain?
I will, I will. There will be another public comment session at the end of our meeting that allows another, another three minute conversation. So.
Thank you for that clarity.
You're more than welcome. Stephanie, do you see anyone else?
I do not see anyone else, no.
Very good. Uh, let's see, with that, uh, close that public hearing. At six fifty. Motion to approve the two thousand twenty-two comprehensive plan amended amendment docket. Now, motion please.
I move to approve the forward forwarding the comprehensive plan proposed amendments. As the twenty twenty-two docket for the planning commission for review and processing. Together with the associated area wide rezones.
Thinking.
A motion and a second. Counsel, any questions or very council member blue?
Uh, Eric, what are the, um, area wide rezones that would be discussed? Since they were on the.
The area wide rezone is just a name that they use. It's not necessarily looking at entire area and rezoning the whole entire area. Uh, the rezones, as I stated before, would take the, the Indian Eyes application and rezone the property that's currently zoned residential to commercial. Uh, for the, uh, Mitchell career application, it would be rezoning the properties from commercial to multifamily residential. So those would be the rezone applications that are, that would subsequently follow can be run concurrent.
They wouldn't, it, it, it wouldn't. I mean, in the past, we have had rezones. Uh, extend beyond the property that was on the agenda. Great property comes to mind as one of them. So I, that's, that's why I asked the question.
Good.
Um, and I guess the, the term high density commercial, high. High intensity commercial. That, what, I, I did know we had high and low as far as, um.
Uh, that's a comprehensive plan designation that we've got for it. Um, you also have, so that would entail things such as CLI. Yeah.
Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
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 Both like sign. Motion carried. Thank you, council. Thank you, Eric. Much appreciated. All right, so we're gonna go to motion to authorize the mayor to sign a copier lease with Public Works, the community development and finance. And, uh, as council member smart asked to move this, I'll, uh. Ask for a clarification or staff report from Ms. Quinn. Information for us this evening might be of benefit to Mr. Smart.
Uh, yes, so this, uh, is, uh, our copier lease that was signed in twenty seventeen. It was signed for five copiers, which includes, uh, four copiers on this total campus. And then there was one police one as well. Uh, the police is on a separate contract already signed and already done. Um, this one would be for four, uh, copiers, uh, lease. Uh, one of those is in the finance department. We have one of those here in the community development, public works side. Uh, we also have a plotter machine, which is the big wide, um, prints the big maps like that one over on the wall. And then we would have one in the maintenance shop, um, a copier. Uh, this, uh, cost, it's a reduction to our current lease, um, pretty significantly. Uh, if I take comparables, so if I took these four copiers, uh, compared them to the four that we're replacing. Is about a two hundred dollar a month reduction, uh, for an equivalent machine. Um, also, uh, I didn't include on the staff report, but I know Mr. Smart asked the question. Um, cause it, it does come with a, uh, maintenance, um, included with it and we pay, uh, per copy cost. Um, the copies, let's see, I have them here. Right now, we're currently paying for black and white copies. We're currently paying point, uh. Point nine nine cents and that will go up to one cent per copy. Whereas for color copies, uh, we are currently averaging probably six point one cents, uh, per colored copy. And that will drop to, uh, four point. Four point five four cents per copy. So there will be a reduction in our copy cost as well, uh, with this new agreement. Um, average, uh, so I took our total copies, uh, based on Mr. Smart's question. Uh, in twenty twenty-one, we, uh, these, I didn't include the plotter, so I just included the three main copiers. Uh, which was two hundred and seventy-five thousand copies, roughly a little bit more. Uh, so an average monthly of about just under twenty-three thousand copies a month. Um, for a total yearly cost in copies for twenty twenty-one was, uh, nine thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. Um, staff is recommending obviously pass, uh. Uh, authorizing the mayor to sign the new lease. Um, our old lease is expiring. Are there any other questions?
And in the term of the contract, what is the total savings for the entire term of the contract?
Uh, based on the total savings, it would be four hundred and forty-five a month if you take our average usage. Cause the usage cost of per copy is going to drop as well. So it's gonna be an average of four hundred and forty-five a month. Which equates to about twenty-six thousand, uh, a year or in the five years contract term.
Uh, before we move on, you turn it over to councilman smart, I'll ask for a motion.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute a five-year lease agreement with KBL Inc. With three Biz Hub copier scanner fax machines. And one Epson plotter.
Second, thank you. Council member smart.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I appreciate the opportunity to see some of the details on this. And I also appreciate the opportunity for the public to hear the explanation on this cost because it does add up to. Uh, forty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars over five years for, uh, for, for printing machines. It's good to hear the detail that one of them is a plotter, which I know is significantly more expensive. Um, but that is a large expense. I'm, I'm happy to hear that the price of the copies isn't much more than I would have to pay. To go to Staples or some local business office to have the copies made. Um, however, I do point out that, that I can do that for about those prices and I don't have to pay the forty-nine thousand dollars. Over the course of five years to own those machines. So I understand the convenience is, is necessary. Um, however, I, I do still question the need to have. May I understand the plotter? Uh, I, obviously the police office and the, and the municipal service facility next door, you don't have to walk through different buildings to get a copy. Um, can, can I just, um. Say or ask why, what, what are the other two, uh, yeah, so you've got four on this contract. One in municipal service and one's a plotter. So you have two more, um, in this building and, and I'm curious to know if that's. I mean, I just wanna make sure that's a justifiable expense.
We have one in the maintenance shop. So that's one. And then we have, uh, two here, ones in the finance side and ones on the community development side. Uh, I will tell you in the finance side, it includes, uh, HR, finance department and, uh, the city clerk. And I will tell you that that copier is running non-stop, um, especially with. Uh, let's say even at the front counter, people come in and they need a receipt printed. A lot of times it'll be printed from that printer. So having it the proximity close to that front counter, which we tried to do on both sides. Uh, it, it's more of a, like, a workflow type of thing to go out and. Like have it printed by Staples would be kind of, uh, crazy, uh, when we're like printing five hundred. Past due notices, for example. So we have our, uh, utility bills that go out. Uh, we will put print some larger jobs, uh, especially on the finance side, I believe, uh, public works are contract specialist. Uh, also, when she puts, uh, bid packages together that go out to the public, uh, we, we are running those machines. Quite, quite a bit.
Well, I appreciate all the information you gave. Um, can you repeat the, is two hundred and seventy-five thousand copies? Uh, roughly in a year, is that?
Yeah, in twenty twenty, in twenty twenty-one, it was two hundred and seventy-five thousand. I took all the bills for the year and added all the copies up.
Okay, yeah, that's great to know. And I appreciate that sponsor.
Council member blue?
Uh, just for completeness, ask the question, we are, we are not going to own these machines. Are we getting new machines or are they just existing ones? Extended these.
Uh, no, they're replacements. So we're getting, uh, equivalent, uh, machines that are, are brand new. Um, and that's just updating the contract with brand new machines.
And we, do we pay toner and paper?
Yeah, all the tone, we do pay paper. That's, we buy that, but the toner, any of the maintenance. Uh, so if the copying machine is broken, we call Abidan, they come out and fix it. It's no cost. Uh, additional cost, uh, toner, we run out of toner, we call them up, they drop the toner off, uh, toner, uh. Waste cartridges, the same, any parts that are worn down or broken, they come in and repaired. Uh, it, it's all included in the, the lease cost.
I just want, you have a complete picture. Thank you.
Council member Moran?
Thank you. Uh, just to kind of finish out that complete picture, I just wanna make sure, um. So there's also moments where we would need to have a printer in-house due to privacy reasons. And business practice reasons that we might want to not have printing off, uh, tables or something, right?
Uh, I mean, potentially, and I know like in the finance side as well with HR stuff, there is oftentimes things. And, uh, that also acts as a, uh, fax machine for us, um, which we, on the finance side, we still do have the. Analog, I guess, is that the right term? Uh, fax machine due to, uh, things like the HIPAA and other items. Um, and then we do also use that for scanning. So anything you guys got in your electronic packets, that was all done by that machine as well. And that's not a printed cost. Uh, you have to understand that. That is not a paper printed cost like this. That is just part of the service.
Thank you. And I would just also like to say that I would imagine that the cost of gas going to and from a printing place. Along with if the printing places printers are down for whatever reason, that would add time and cost of this.
Councilman Smart, yeah.
Yeah, I just have to clarify. I, I wasn't seriously saying that you should go to some local office outfit to do this. I was just comparing the price. Uh, that's all I was doing. I, and I would absolutely never suggest me do that. I do suggest that we ask ourselves if we still need to actually two printers. So I mean, maybe. Mr. Mendenhall could say how often his printer is used, but I don't wanna put you on the spot. If, if it's, I just wanna bring up the question, is it justified? It's a lot of money.
I, I would.
Printers or for copying, right?
Absolutely justified because I have, uh, if in a backup, if I have one machine down and I need to print utility bills. I have access to that second machine.
That's an excellent point.
Well, and council most smart, I think if you ask staff, they'd ask for another machine. It is used.
I, I do realize that we're now gonna increase the budget next year.
Yeah, don't have, open that can of worms.
Not, not to mention the foot traffic when you spend time walking from one end of the building to another, divide that by how many hours, wait the unproductive time. Yeah, so appreciate your concerns and comments in regards to the stewardship of the citizens' money, but this is. Money well spent over a term of five, five years. It's a savings of twenty-six thousand dollars. Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, right. I, thank you.
Okay, so with that, uh, I have motion second conversation is complete. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, council. And with that, moving on to Jay L. And then wherever, we're at the last one here. So it's amending the West Richardson Municipal Code, uh, chapter two dash thirty-two. City office hours. And I'll ask Selena or Sims, uh, yes. Different Selena, Selena.
Selena.
Yeah, Stephanie and Selena are my Selena, cause I holler for both of them quite regularly. So Selena, thank you for joining us this evening, taking time out of your evening to, uh, present their staff report.
So just starting, we'll go ahead and go over, uh, the basics of the hours. So currently, city offices are open Monday through Friday from eight to five. And they're closed to twelve, from twelve to one for lunch. So what we're proposing is that we alter that slightly. So that it's Monday through Thursday from eight to four and remaining open for lunch. And then Fridays, the hours would be from eight to noon. And just a little history of why we're even looking at this is one of the things that we're doing with this budget cycle is looking at benefits for employees. And having flexible schedules is one of the, um, least expensive things we can do for an employee. Uh, and that kind of falls into, uh, do, would that person prefer to work eight hours a day? A nine hour schedule of four times. And some of them, that means they would be starting early in order to get out early, which is actually the preferred schedule by. Uh, almost all the staff, they would, I, I probably get in the system, almost staff. So, you know, people prefer to work earlier. So when we looked at that, then the directors came back and they said that what would help them know. What they could, uh, approve in schedules was, um, a slight change to the office hours. So we did bring it to the finance committee and they made a great suggestion of if we close earlier, that we do just remain open during the lunch hour. Because we do have a lot of people that, um, that is their busy time. Contractors are still working at that time. They're in earlier and out earlier. A lot of people, um, you know, that's their lunch break. They can't get out of work and tend to come down. So without, uh, actually having a chance to look at the front door and see what happens when we're closed. We do have the assumption that that lunch hour would be a very busy time for staff and helping customers. So that is really the reason why we even came to this was trying to find a solution to the office hours that would very minimally affect the customer service. While hopefully greatly affecting the benefit to the employees on the other end. So the idea of this is that the counters have, you know, um, customer service that where they're not left without, you know, adequate staffing. Uh, what that exactly looks like will be the next stage when we see, you know, what everybody comes up with their, their staffing hours. But it is the director's job to make sure that there is coverage. And then, um, that would in the end be fully approved by the mayor. Once, you know, we've made sure that there are no loopholes or. Or openings in that for, for, you know, um, basically not having the coverage that we need. So I can't answer all the questions quite yet, but that is the point of changing the office hours. And that, of course, the idea would be then the customers are helped, that the citizens are helped.
And with that, may I have a motion, please? And I'll turn it over to councilmember smart and others.
I'll move to approve ordinance fifteen twenty-two amending the West Richardson Municipal Code, section two point thirty-two point oh one oh. Changing the city of West Richardson's office hours.
Second.
Have motion and a second. And with that, councilmember smart, if you would.
Yes, again, thank you for, um, taking this off and, and discussing it. Uh, the way it looked to me and the concern that I had was that, um. It, the way the office hours are stated, uh, that were the proposed new office hours would, if somebody worked. That time and, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. Uh, eight hours a day minus a half hour for lunch. That's thirty hours. And then I, maybe I misunderstood, then you're saying they only have to work until eight to twelve on Friday. So that's another. Four hours, not, it's thirty-four hour work week. Am I, am I missing something there?
Uh, well, yes, and currently, um.
Thank you. I just, I, I'm a little slow on the uptake here.
That's okay.
You can't have those hours, councilman smart.
Well, our current guidance right now would continue to be the guidance is we have to have coverage during the hours that we're in operation. So people are allowed to flex around those hours. But people get here early or stay late. Um, so they are working, you know, the, the standard forty hour work week or more. Um, but these are the core office hours that we're looking for the coverage. So it does help to shorten them because that means that people no longer have to stay till five. They can come earlier to leave it for, but they gotta get their forty hours in. So it is still a forty hour work week.
Uh, I might also add that during these conversations, it was, it was, I was very adamant that. All other staff, public works, finance, planning. Uh, there needed to be support for their, their, their sister departments as well. Uh, you know, we, we can't have non. Uh you know, we we can't have non-coverage when we all work together and everybody's, everybody impacts everybody else in the picture. That was a necessity as well, so we've also got that taken care of consideration.
And I think this might be my last comment on this, I just wanted to make it really clear and publicly stated. What you just said, because the way the text reads. I don't think that I came to a an ill-founded conclusion from the way it read. I I was hoping that wasn't the intention. And that obviously this is hours of the office, not necessarily the hours of the employees.
Yes, correct.
Distinction that's important to me, thank you.
Councilmember Stoker?
I just wanted to, so. We're certain this isn't going to necessarily infect citizens' access. Going forward, I mean, are there citizens who are used to coming in the four to five o'clock timeframe, that now this is going to affect and?
It's our slowest timeframe, and really even the Friday, the twelve, um you know, the one to five is definitely the slowest timeframe. Um it's it's partially why we did look at that too, uh we really don't get a lot of traffic in. The unknown is how much are we missing during the lunch hour? So right now it is a guess that we're missing a lot of people during during lunch hour, but we have found. Just through conversation, it's it's not official, but people get a lot of comments about us not being open during the lunch hour. Um and just realizing kind of what people's schedules are. Uh and and the amount of people we see coming up to the door and trying to get in during lunch when people are sitting at the desk. So we don't know what we're missing during the lunch hour, but um it doesn't look like we'll be missing a lot during the four to five hour. So. I think some of that will be discovered, you know, as we.
As a matter of fact, I think when when we changed the, closed the hours, you you weren't on, I said just, councilman Bloom and myself. And the reason that we did that is because we didn't have enough staff to cover during lunch. And times have certainly changed, if you recall, oh yeah, that was a, that was a difficult discussion. But it turned out well, councilman Bloom, did you have something else to add?
But two points, um one was, I I reflect back as a child, which is a long time. Especially since. Today is my birthday.
Oh, happy birthday.
That was a long time. Anyway, uh you hear the phrase baker's hours. Well, my family had a. Family savings and loan. Much and and, you know, my uncle was this, my aunt was that, my sister worked there, my brother-in-law worked there. It was a family business, much like a. A homestead or um the the uh. He's a. Except only one branch, and they were closed at two o'clock. Do you know why they closed at two o'clock? They had to balance their books, they couldn't go home till they got their books balanced, which was all manual. And so in in much the same aspect, closing early, I I go back to working out on the site. You know. You know, we got off at four thirty, you know, I didn't leave till god knows when, just to get through my emails. So it it looks good. I I see another aspect of this is we have an opportunity here to add part-time staff. You know, and and to fill some of these positions, which might be uh uh useful in our future. So uh you know, a lot of flexibility here, so I'm glad you brought this forward.
Thank you, councilman. Councilmember Moran?
Thank you, um. The only concern I have with it is that, you know, if you're someone like me where you're working at the lab. You don't get out until after four or sometimes five, so if I were to need to go to. The city hall, I would not be able to get anything. I understand completely what you're talking about with the with the flexibility, um and I'm wondering. I I know there's really not a way here, but the way that we at least had it was that during the core hours, everybody had to be there. But the core hours are different than the office hours, you just have to make sure that somebody's there past the core hours to match the office hours. Especially since there's limited people that normally come in between four to five, I'm wondering. I I don't want to take away that cafe on Friday, because I think that's a really good idea, especially for staff, but I'm just curious, is there a way? Perhaps to work it to where it would be, the core hours would be eight to four, but the office hours would still be until five with maybe. One person that was the late guy, late person.
One thing that we've also learned during COVID is to start taking appointments. So a lot of stuff during COVID, when we were closed during that time, went electronic, and that helped a lot, especially on the utility. No longer charging um to take a credit card, being able to take things, you know, automated, so that really helped that end. What the community development and public works department found is that um also because we only have so many people and they're out on site all the time. They started scheduling things more, um so that is one great way to either. Most people are here at seven, seven-thirty in the morning, you know. Um they would be willing to take an appointment when they're here or during lunch hour, or to stay later one day because they could come in late the next day. Um so there's always the avenue of actually making the appointment where we could, you know, sit down and work with that person more on their schedule. And and that's become much more popular since COVID and we were closed, so we're we're more into the habit of. Asking people and setting that up now, especially when someone like an engineer is not here, they're in the field. So we can prompt them down that lane, is it just a call or do you need an appointment? Um so we are actively working at uh, you know, getting people in more on their schedule.
So then, pardon, just to follow up, I'm wondering, so then could people schedule appointments that might be. Starting at four, going to five, even though they aren't in office hours, or would they be still scheduling appointments only during the office hours?
I would see that uh they would be scheduling both when the person's available and our employee is available. Um being human resources, I I'm obviously totally different, but uh when I set up appointments with people. Um especially new employees or potential candidates, it's really completely on their schedule. I'm here till five thirty. Sometimes I'll come in at seven, if they need to be here at seven thirty, you know, I'll just do it, it's not a big deal, we're here anyway, you know. So um I I found that all the staff is very flexible like that.
All right, Ross.
Just for the record, Selena's never been here at seven thirty.
I second that.
True.
I'll 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 have to, I'll I'll have to say during wellness days and the events that she she does promote, she's here at seven thirty. Yeah, yeah. All right, very good. Counsel, uh let's go all in favor, say aye please. Uh pose like sign. Motion carried, thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Stephanie, Selena. Selena. If you're looking, when these guys are here cracking on and stay here all day, all night, they're great. Okay, so with that, we're gonna move, we don't, we have no unfinished business this evening, nor do we have any new business, so this is the time for our second public comment. Uh this evening, so if you would like to make comment to counsel, uh please. Raise your virtual hand, or if you're here in person, which nobody is this evening unfortunately. And then I'll allow you three minutes for your comments. I see this resident miss is a. Stephanie, want to unmute her and recognize her please?
Hello?
You're unmuted, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, thank you for confirming the audio, I have technical difficulties. I appreciate councilmember Bloom, um I appreciate the humility of of uh Mister Smart. Councilmember Moran and councilmember Bloom as they spoke, they were able to easily clarify semantics. And that kind of leaders are are what we need. Um as I speak to that and only have three minutes. Um I have. Three questions. Um what are we doing for safety of waterways that threaten property owners that are both commercial and and residential? Um I appreciated when um councilmember uh Bloom, or I'm sorry, he has a even a different title. Is he, he might have more titles than that, I don't know, but when Mister Bloom with all of his titles spoke. The thing that came to my mind was KID and the flooding, not only in these apartments. But in the um commercial property we own, we've had water issues there, we have water issues. On the residential and production commercial property out in Redmott Road. And those water issues um are safety concerns, while they are economically um nice for everyone. Us included, I got the valuations, I'm with you all the way on the statistics on a high-intensity commercial, what, how is that measured? Mister Smart, I thought that was semantics clarity that we all need. But one of my concerns is that safety, and you're gonna say, you know, long, is that safety concern, is that shared by enough people? And that's, that's a statistic I would like. What are we doing for the waterways and the flooding in these apartments? Nothing. If the gardener hits the line, KID floods. Maybe the manager's on the property, maybe not, maybe it's a weekend. Um I have somebody I can call. What do you do if your residence or commercial property is is flooded? You know, is that a tick on your insurance? Yeah. Yeah, you better have some good insurance. And then last of all, how can you measure? Safety concerns without numbers added to what is high-intensity commercial, what's low-intensity commercial? So I guess I would love. If I could get a a beautiful screen show like you had earlier in the meeting that was phenomenal. I'd like to know what are those numbers, what is the high intensity and what do, what am I looking for in safety for that? And how do I measure that statistically? Um and other than that, I appreciate the fun semantics journey. Um nobody has an accountant in their pocket or five attorneys with them at all times, and I appreciate the humility. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else virtually this evening? See, no one. We'll go ahead and move on to staff council comments and reports. Uh staff, if you have anything uh you need to talk to this evening, I'll see Chief Grego and recognize him.
Thank you, mayor, and councilmembers. Uh tonight, I just want to report that we did have a candidate sign a job offer last week, so we are down to four open positions. Hopefully the background, everything goes clear on that and things go smooth for us. Uh we're still working on our recruiting and. As well as everybody else in the area. I also want to start the night by thanking everybody that helped out with the National Night Out. That was a fantastic event again this year, we can't do it without the the help of the public and all of our sponsors. So thank you to everybody, we really appreciate that. Um we're hoping to improve every year like we do, so. The last thing I want to talk about tonight is schools starting up August thirty-first here in West Richland. Um we will have extra patrols out during that week uh for the safety of the children in school zones. And I just want to let the public know that we'll be out there, so please obey the laws and speed limits um to keep our children safe. Thank you.
Thank you, chief, appreciate it. Mister Slade?
Yeah, just uh add on to the office hour changes, the effective date is still planned for Tuesday, September sixth, so we'll get the front door. Template changed and get that out on social media and whatnot, that's Tuesday, uh September. Six will be the, when that change occurs.
Thank you. Counselor, counsel, he always tries to counsel. Mister Menon Hall?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, appreciate that. Uh members of the council, just wanted to let you know uh coming next week, in the next two weeks, we're gonna be having some. Uh workshops, talking about the parks, talking about the maintenance and operation of the parks and levels of service for that. Um as well as uh deferred maintenance and levels of service for future parks. For element as it comes in, so I'll be sending out some information through Stephanie here and then with this week. Um there'll be a lot to read, uh some of you have already got most packets, those that serve on the park subcommittee. Uh so I'm sure you're you're all. Boned up on that and ready to go, the rest of you will get to get to do that, so um more information on that to come later this week.
I just want to comment on that, that packet was hard for me to open, so the link just wouldn't work, so. I but I was able to get get there, so Stephanie, be careful with what that is, it's huge.
Thank you, appreciate that comment, we'll make sure the best taken care of.
Thank you, then we'll move on to council comments report. Cards up, councilmember Bloom?
I wanted to say that the Ben Franklin Transit Board had its first meeting with its new general manager, uh Rochelle Blazer. Um there were a lot of, you know, it's interesting, there the the discussion was that. Well, gee, we may not have enough money for that kind of transit now. Um well, in in the future. Um but the, just to be clear, we are fully ready to support the upcoming fair. And if you buy the combo pass, you're basically getting a free bus ride there. So um you know, if you are somehow have a day pass or you're working the fair. It's about fifty to get there, but uh you can also use via, download the via app. And we'll connect people, get you closer to the to to the. To the bus to get you there, so. Um but. And Franklin Transit will be fully supporting this fair this year.
Thank you, appreciate it. Councilmember Moran?
Thank you very much. So first, I I would like to echo what Chief Grego said about National Mineout, it was fantastic, lots of really great participation. Really fun, good time, and it wasn't as hot as I was expecting, which is weird to say here, and I won't say it again. Um I would also like to thank those that have emailed us comments, uh for instance, comments from. Uh Ms. Pam Ritchie, and I would also like to thank President Miss for the comments as well. Um I would like to say that bike safety is especially something that I like to talk about. On the Bitten Franklin Council of Governments, because there is a um area-wide focus on biking safety. And there is actually a map on the biking trails and paths that are available in the Tri-City, so I definitely recommend checking that out. Speaking of Bitten Franklin Council of Governments, there is a meeting this Friday. Uh it is hybrid, and I am going to be very happy to vote on the uh TIP obligations. Which is going to include the teen road pathway extension, which is another bike path. That we are going to be putting in here in West Richland to make safer for the residents here. Um there is also a draft TIP open house that the F C O's having, it's on Zoom. And that'll be September eighth from three P M to five P M, and I believe I just saw something in the mail about backflow testing due by September fifteenth. Is that correct, Steph?
Backflow testing's uh changes every month based on your residency, so it's not the same for everybody.
Got you, well, just make sure that you keep up with your backflow testing. That's all I got, thank you.
Councilmember Stoker?
Yes, thank you, Mister Mayor, so I did also want to add to Chief Grego's comments about uh the National Diet Night Out. We had a great time, was able to encourage some friends in the community who've never been before, I was shocked to find out. Not everybody comes, I mean, it's always a good turnout. Um my daughter won twice in the drawing. I couldn't believe it, I mean, she got a bicycle and she was like, please put it back in the drawing, because it's way too small for me. So anyway, that was great. I also wanted to let you know that I am going to be out of town the week of Labor Day. Which is when I believe our next one will be scheduled. Um I do not plan, I don't believe there'll be much in the way of internet or network, network access where I'll be, so. Um please uh excuse me for that meeting, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember, appreciate that, make note of that. And then uh with that, nobody else has comments, we are going to move into an executive session. Uh we'll adjourn the executive session, consider the R C W forty-two thirty eleven. Or excuse me, one ten F, uh to receive and evaluate complaints and charges brought against a public officer or employee. Should take about twenty minutes with no intended action to follow. So we'll adjourn to executive session.
Stephanie, you're gonna go ahead and put us back online?
Yes, we are back on Zoom and back with live mics.
Okay, thank you very much Council. We have concluded our executive session and I will adjourn this meeting at 8:17. Thank you.